Welcome to a meeting of the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education. Please be advised that this and all meetings of the Board are open to the public and media, consistent with the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4-6, and that advance notice required therein has been provided. Meeting notice was also posted in the boardroom of the upper school campus, sent to the Courier News, Star Ledger, Express Times, and the Hundred and County Democrat, and sent to the Clerks of Delaware Township, East Danwell Township, Flemington Borough, Raritan Township, and Reddington Township. The public will have an opportunity to be heard, as shown on the agenda. Can I have a roll call, Ms. Spencer?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Here.
Mr. Davidson?
Here.
Mrs. Duggan?
Here.
Mr. Fowler?
Here.
Mrs. Hughes?
Here.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Here.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mrs. Peterson?
Here.
And Mr. Reimer?
Thank you. Can we please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Mrs. Peterson, would you read the district mission statement for us, please?
As it pops up, there we go. Hundred and Central is an innovative educational community dedicated to the intellectual, social, and emotional safety and growth of all students. While fostering curiosity and promoting wellness, we aspire to create powerful learning experiences, establish strong partnerships, and serve as contributing members of society.
Thank you. Anne, could I have a motion for approval of the December 19, 2022 minutes?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Abstain, I wasn't here.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Abstain.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Abstain.
Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Abstain.
We have a majority of yes votes, the motion carries.
Thank you. And can I have a motion to approve the minutes from January 3, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Bloodfield?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. I don't believe we have student council present, so Dr. Moore, just during your superintendent's report, will you report on that? Okay, great. And we have two items of correspondence, which are noted on the agenda. And with that, we will move into Dr. Moore's superintendent report.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Hughes and everyone. Thank you. First off, mission statement has me kind of reflecting tonight again about, well, a couple of things. And the mission being, of course, that statement about all of our children, and we often have been talking about that, not just in the aspirational all, but in what that means for each. So each is a word that we've been using quite a bit over the months. And as I was thinking about, well, what did that make me think of tonight? I came back to our December 19 Board of Education meeting and just the student celebration that we had at the beginning of that meeting, and how we had that moment to recognize each of our students. So it's every day here, not necessarily sort of mission moments in the sense of one moment after another, but looking at each one of our students as an opportunity to live our mission. So 26, 2700 mission moments are a potential for every day that we have here, and it's just wonderful. I also want to reflect on our retreat from Saturday, and how wonderful it was for the Board to gather on Saturday, and not only enjoy some bagels, and with thanks to the efforts of Mrs. Graham in my office and everybody who put all that together in the room for us, but also Mrs. Ferguson, Judy Ferguson, Dr. Ferguson, right? Dr. Ferguson? Oh, sorry, Wilson, Wilson, Dr. Wilson.
Is she Dr.?
I don't know. Judy Wilson. Judy Wilson was here to help us through some really interesting conversation about everything from policy to communications, to norms, to governance, and boardsman and boardspersonship. And it struck me, too, thinking about, you know, one of the metaphors that we were talking a bit about in some of the groups was the nesting bowls, and the mission statement and the values and the things we want to do for each child, sort of being that biggest bowl on the bottom, and everything having to stack up neatly within that. So I've just been thinking quite a bit, and through some good football this weekend, I hate to share, I was pretty pleased this weekend, we had a good weekend. In that, too, thank you to our new members, Sue and Rebecca and Jerry, for all of your responsiveness, willingness to come together. It was great to meet with all of you last week. It's been great to get to connect with you in the months since your election. It's been, it was great to have you at the table certainly again on Saturday. So your responsiveness, your readiness, the work that you're doing to get ramped up, it's a lot to do, and we all really appreciate it. So thank you. Now, a couple of things. Student Council is working with us, or a small group of student council. In fact, we have a meeting this Wednesday, if weather doesn't get in our way, with the group of students who have been tasked with helping us to design our structure for student representation to the Board. So one of the things that we've been talking about over the past couple of months is how to reorganize, and in line with some of the conversations we've had in student life and program, how do we reorganize clubs and activities in a way that they can really reflect student life and provide opportunities for student voice to come up to the Board of Education? So we'll be talking about that this week. Wednesday, we have a meeting with those students, and we're going to get right to work with them on bringing that to bear for student representation on the Board. The thing that we are watching for Wednesday, though, is a little bit of weather, and it's sort of changing. It's up and down as far as accumulations. I shared with the Board an email this evening, though, there's an opportunity to share with our new members and refresh our veteran members on sort of what happens on a snow event. So this one, although accumulation doesn't look like it's going to be all that much of an issue, we might be looking at anywhere between half an inch, two inch, four inches, you know, they're kind of all over the place a little bit right now. The timing of it is very, very difficult. If it holds to this timing, we're going to have a tough morning. The last I saw it was about a 7:30 a.m. until about 1:00 p.m. thing, which means a delayed opening doesn't help us, and an early dismissal doesn't help us. So we're just going to have to play that by ear, early, early, early on Wednesday morning, and figure out what to do. So no news is good news, but if you're hearing from me by, you know, Lisa will get the phone call or the text most likely early in the morning, but if you're hearing from me by email to let you know that we have to take another route, you know, that's how you'll know. But we're watching it closely, and we have two school days, I'm sorry, two snow days on our calendar that we can use before we have to dip into some of our holidays to make up the 180 days. One point to make here, the state was moving in the beginning of this year to allow us to use virtual days in the event of weather, but that bill never made it to the governor's desk for sign, or if it did, it never got signed. So we aren't able to use virtual days in the event of inclement weather. So we would either be closing or opening, or having a modified schedule, delayed opening or early dismissal, but we would not be doing a virtual day except under very specific circumstances.
And thank you for not referring to us as old members.
I didn't pause too much.
You did pause.
Oh, I'm sorry. The couple of other things here for us tonight, we have a couple of presentations tonight, which I'll introduce in a second. We have a few action items and informational items under our organizational item section later on, and there's bylaws updates there, there are changes to, and the rostering of committees and delegations and liaisons to all of the Board's organizations. We have HIB decision approvals from last time, and more. I want to point out, too, that January is School Board Recognition Month, so bear with me as I do read this out loud, I'm not going to ask you all to read this out loud, but it does represent a testament to the work that you're doing as volunteers who put in, and again, our new folks have already put in, a lot of time and effort to represent our mission and our community coming together in programming and opportunity for our students. So whereas the New Jersey School Boards Association has declared January 2023 to be School Board Recognition Month, a time when all residents can acknowledge the contributions made by our local school board members, and whereas the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education is one of 581 local school boards in New Jersey, which sets policies and oversees operations for public school districts, and whereas the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education embraces the goal of high-quality education for all New Jersey public school students, and whereas New Jersey's local school boards help determine the educational goals for approximately 1.4 million children in pre-kindergarten through 12th grade, and whereas New Jersey's 5,000 local school board members who receive no remuneration for their service act as advocates for public school students as they work with administrators, teachers, and parents for the betterment of public education, and whereas school boards strive to provide the resources necessary to meet the needs of all students, including those with special needs, and whereas boards of education provide accountability to the public, they communicate the needs of the school district to the public, and they convey to school administrators the public's expectations for the school, and whereas New Jersey can take pride in its schools, which rank among the nation's best in key achievement indicators such as the National Assessment of Educational Progress scores and the preparation for college through advanced placement offerings and SAT assessments. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education does hereby recognize the services of local school board members throughout New Jersey as we join communities statewide in observing January 2023 as School Board Recognition Month, and be it further resolved that the Hundred and Central Regional High School Board of Education urges all New Jersey citizens to work with their local boards of education and public school staffs toward the advancement of our children's education. So that'll be up for your vote. Now, that's uncomfortable to vote for something like that for yourself, but I urge you to not abstain on that, and instead vote for one of your peers here at the table, or any one of the other 5,000 local school board members across the state. So please do cast a vote on that. And also, we always love to point out with these resolutions, that is one sentence, that thing right there. Now, in addition to that, let's see, our HIB and suspension report is updated for tonight's agenda. In the coming months, Mr. Brandt will report again on the school safety data system, data for the first half of this school year. His last report was on the second half of last school year, so he'll be reporting soon on the first half, well, in the spring, most likely, on the first half of this school year. Now, presentations, we have Mrs. Cangelosie-Hayde here tonight to deliver a state-mandated report on our Start Strong assessment scores. She's also taking this opportunity to share some additional information about the other key diagnostic assessments that we've begun to use to help us understand all of these scores. And there's some things in there that we're scratching our heads on, that's the phrase we've been using. So she's going to also mention the PSAT 9 and dive a little deeply into the PSAT and MSQT. This is the first year that we've had all of our students, ninth, 10th, and 11th grades, taking some form of the PSAT. Last year, we did the PSAT 9 for all of our ninth graders, and the PSAT and MSQT was done on Saturdays as students signed up for it. This year, we delivered, or administered, rather, the NMSQT for all of our students. So you all have a copy of the PDF, but I would invite you to move down if that's more comfortable. How would you, you want to move down, or do you want to stay up here? Stay up here?
I would say up here if we have.
All right. All right. So Jessica, why don't you take the podium, and Mr. Klein, if you can lower, or, and Mrs. Cangelosie-Hayde, I'll sort of freeze the projector for you. Just as you go through, please let us know when you're going slide to slide, so we can follow.
Okay. Not yet.
What's it doing, anything?
Well, okay, there we go. Looks good. And we can see that okay back there? All right. Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for having me here. I'm back yet again to discuss assessment results this school year. So we're on our third assessment presentation this school year. Usually, we have about one per school year. Now we're on our third, and this time's a little bit different. We're talking about our Start Strong assessments that we took in the fall, this past fall, September and early October. And this is a little bit different than NJSLA and NJGPA, as you will see. And first and foremost, that's because this is not a high-stakes assessment, and that will be important to consider as we go through the results presentation. So I'm now going to move on to the slide on the Start Strong overview, and I thought that was important for, before we get into the results, just to talk a little bit about what exactly is Start Strong. Start Strong is a newer assessment. Last year was the first year we administered it, and it actually came about as a result of the Federal Department of Education's federal testing requirement in order to get federal funding. So the state had canceled the NJSLA in 2021 in the spring, and in order to make sure they tested in the year 2021, they implemented this Start Strong assessment in the fall as a diagnostic assessment. We had thought it would just be for that year, since we've now reinstated testing. However, we did find out late last year and into the summer that we'd be required to do Start Strong again this fall. And so this is intended to be a diagnostic assessment. It's based on standards, and it's meant to complement, which is important, the resources that our teachers and administrators are using to evaluate the strengths and the needs for our students. And I did want to put there what the Department of Education says that the Start Strong assessment does not do. It does not replace our local benchmarks, which is important to know, and we'll talk more about that, and it will not replace the spring testing for the NJSLA or the NJGPA. So this is a lot of testing for our students, and we've been talking about this, as you know, kind of month to month. It's also important to note, and ironic as it may be, that they're saying Start Strong will not be predictive of their NJSLA or NJGPA results. So very interesting. I'm moving on to the next slide, for those of you up there. So we tested students in math for Algebra I, geometry, and Algebra II. We tested English in grades nine and 10, and we tested science in grades nine and 12. And the tests are based on a subset of prior-year academic standards. However, I do want to note, it's not as simple as it is in the younger grades, where the students in fourth grade are tested on third grade. So high school is a little bit different, where the Algebra I and geometry were based on grade eight math standards. Algebra II was based on Algebra I. Sometimes sequentially, those are not the prior year, and I just wanted to make a note of that. And then science was quite broad. Science in grade nine is based on middle school science, and science in grade 12 is based on high school science. So a little bit different, not necessarily the direct prior year. The tests, one of maybe the only good things about this test is that it was designed to be efficient. So luckily, we could do these tests during instructional time, so during science, during English, during math. The only exception was science, grade 12, because half of our grade 12 students are not in science, so we had to pull them differently for that. The tests were much shorter than our regular standardized testing, maximum of 60 minutes, and each content area test had about 10 to 25 questions, so not a lot of questions on there. Again, just designed to be a diagnostic assessment, and it was, the reporting, as you'll see, I'm going to go to the next slide, is supposed to indicate support levels. And so I thought it was important to note, make a note verbally of the support levels. It's different than the scoring that we've seen in the past. We're not assigning a number, and we're not even talking really in terms of proficiency and the assets that students bring. Instead, it's a very deficits-based reporting, so the best you can do on Start Strong is less support may be needed. The middle level is some support may be needed, and the bottom, the lowest reporting group is strong support may be needed. And so that in itself, I personally have an issue with reporting that way, and starting the school year off that way, too, with students getting that type of a report. I do want to note that it was important for, I'm sorry, Dr. Moore.
So, and just to reiterate or to bring up a point, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but this is also within the context of students knowing that this test has no bearing on any of their grades or graduation or placement or anything like that.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Yes. Not a high-stakes test in any way. And to that point, we were also, as the state said, it did not replace benchmarks. So we were still administering our diagnostic benchmarks, whether that was in class, through Lincoln, and we also administered PSAT, which is why you'll see us correlate and triangulate some data to that later. And so I thought it was also very important to note what the NJDOE said about Start Strong data. We should not be comparing this to state-level data or NJSLA data, and that the Start Strong assessments don't cover the breadth and the depth of standards that the other standardized testing does, and most importantly, does not support the same comparisons or inferences about student proficiency. So this was not really a student proficiency assessment, this was really more diagnostic to see if students needed growth or help or support on prerequisite skills, which they thought students may need for the particular course that they're in. So I'm going to talk about our math results first. We'll go through each results slide. When we're looking at this, I wanted to draw your attention to, it's in orange, as you'll see, students who are in need of strong support. And you'll see later on why we're focusing on that, kind of joining, if you will, the green and the yellow, the less support and the some support. So when we look at math, this is similar to what we've seen before. I'm not formally comparing it, because the state says we should not formally compare it to anything, but this is similar to what we've seen before. So in Algebra I, 58% of our students are in need of strong support, according to Start Strong, geometry 35%, and Algebra II 26%. So sequentially, in math here, typically, students would go Algebra I, geometry, Algebra II. And we've seen this in the past, if you recall, students are able to kind of catch up, we catch them up as we go along sequentially in math. But by and large, what we're looking at there is that larger disparity between the Algebra II and geometry data and the Algebra I. We'll then look at English Language Arts for grades nine and 10. Yes, I see everybody clicking. I'm sorry, I didn't tell you to click. And that looks different, as you can see. So much less percentage in terms of students who need support, 27% in ninth grade, 25% in 10th. So much different, and perhaps you could say more positive in terms of the support levels that are indicated. And then we'll look at science in grades nine and 12. So I've moved on to that science slide there, and you can see the disparity in science. Again, science is a strange animal here in that, first of all, the standards it's based on is much more broad. So to say middle school science, you know, that's three years of science for our ninth grade, and I believe, although I'm not sure, and I probably am not supposed to make these judgment calls, that could be why we see more of the yellow than we've seen in our other subject area tests. And then in grade 12 science, that's based on high school science, so that's at least three years of science instruction again, but these students took the NJSLA science test in May, if you recall, and half of them are not in a science class right now. In addition to them already knowing their NJGPA results and knowing that actually none of it counts for graduation for them, so you do see, though, according to Start Strong, 50% of them are in need of strong support in science. So next, I want us to look at some disaggregated data. So we're going to look at the groups we typically look at. First, we'll look at gender and the differences between males and females and their reporting groups in Start Strong. So you'll see the largest disparity in terms of strong support is on English Language Arts. And you'll recall on prior reports, you heard our English supervisor actually talk about this little bit of disparity, and the importance of then looking at our curriculum to say, what is it in there that we can really engage our male students with, so that they're enjoying reading and writing and progressing more on that? And then we will look at race and ethnicity. So I'm on to the next slide. And this should look familiar to you. This is what we see with our testing data, and I don't want to have to keep hitting at home, but this is the story, right, that our Black and African-American students and our Hispanic and Latino students are students who are in more need of strong support than their Asian and white and multiracial counterpart peers. So that, we see that on every single assessment there, and we see that again here. And then further disaggregating by program, so I'm on to the next slide for you all. The left bar is all students, so how did the whole student group do? And then we're comparing students with IEPs. Students with 504 plans are multilingual learners or English language learners, and then are economically disadvantaged students. And again, you will see similar trends that we've seen before, where our students with IEPs, our multilingual learners, and our economically disadvantaged students are definitely in more need of strong support as compared to their peers. One highlight, and then another note, our students with 504 is actually, if you look as they compare to all students, they did well. They're right on par with the all-students measurements. And then I would just like to note, for English language learners, you may recall this from last year, when we reported on our access testing, that we're really leaning critical information, not necessarily from Start Strong on our Ls, but from their WIDA levels, from the access test. So what does this mean? We have this data, what are we doing with it? And so we're doing kind of what we've done with other data, and this is what the state says, but it's a little bit different, and I wanted to review it. So yes, we're looking at our curriculum to see, do we need to kind of replan or change our scope and sequence in terms of prerequisite skills? Do we need any different learning supports for students, and do we need to provide professional development to staff on that? I would say our staff, especially over the past few years, have done a lot on learning acceleration, so that kind of just-in-time instruction from unit to unit to address prerequisite skills and any kind of support that may be needed there. And then we're supposed to be using those individual student reports for conversations between educators and parents and students on any supports they need. Now, the Department of Education did say at the beginning of the school year, unfortunately, we did not get the reports until late December, so we didn't mail them out until right after our winter break. So, you know, now we're mid-year, so it would have been great to have them even earlier in the school year to be able to send them out. I think most importantly is this statement from the Department of Education, and it will lead me to my next point and some other future slides, that our assessment data should be measured along other measures of student performance. So we're talking about our teacher assessments, our benchmark assessments, attendance data, so having multiple forms and multiple measures of data to really look at the whole picture of the student and see what the strengths and the areas for growth are.
Jessica? They said earlier we should not do that.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's why I'm putting quotes up here for all of you, because you will see there are some contradictions between the things they're telling us.
So these tests, 10 questions, 20 questions, what's the typical load, is somewhere in between there, 10 to 20 questions? That's the efficiency part of these tests?
Yes, English was lower, 10 to 12 questions, where math and science were more around the 20 mark.
Got it, got it. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. So, even though we have some contradictions on what we should be doing, we also administered the PSAT, which is, you know, a longstanding assessment, nationally, internationally recognized. And so we thought it was important to compare that. So when you look at interventions here, we have to talk about interventions with every standardized assessment we give, but I want to take those interventions, and then we'll push them into us talking about PSAT as well. You've seen me talk about these interventions before, and so for us, Start Strong is another marker, it's another data point for us to use. So we're comparing it to PSAT, to our Lincoln benchmarks, to our course benchmarks. I can't say we're comparing it to NJSLA and NJGPA, but we're also using those as markers for students. And we do have already a multi-tiered system of support in place, a program in place. Tier one interventions are done in the classroom, that's by the teacher, that's, they're noticing somebody maybe needs assistance with factoring, and so they're in the class designing instruction or doing very small group or one-on-one kind of help with factoring. Tier two is more of a small group, and it's maybe push-in or pull-out, depending on what we do. And we do have teachers assigned to tier two RTI, Response to Intervention blocks during the school day. And then we also do tier three, which is just a deeper, stronger form of intervention. So I wanted you to know, that's still all in place, and Start Strong is just another component we use to identify students for that. In particular, in math, you've heard me talk about this before, but we use a software called iXL. That's been very instrumental and very helpful to our students and to our teachers as well, because you can target specific skills and standards on there. because you can target specific skills and standards on there. And that's able to, to really give us more data on the progress the students are making toward achieving proficiency or mastery in a specific skill. And we do offer Block Five tutorial, as you know. We are about to ramp up our spring tutorials. They are in preparation for our spring assessments, but in addition, just offering those to students who need more support. It's an additional tutorial opportunity for students. We have seen success with that, especially since COVID, offering it virtually, offering it in the evening hours as well, just to account for different student scheduling concerns. We continuing to work in our departments with our common assessments. You'll hear Dr. Hall talk about that momentarily here. And then, again, another important component is working with our K-8 sending districts as well. So I'm going to switch gears over to our PSAT now. So you've heard me talk about validity and reliability in assessment, and PSAT is one that's been around for, for some time now. So we administered PSAT to our ninth graders last year. Dr. Moore talked about that. This year, we administered it in school to our ninth, 10th, and 11th graders. And so it was a whole, kind of whole school PSAT. The ninth graders take the PSAT eight, nine, and the 10th and 11th graders take the PSA, PSAT NMSQT. So that's the National Merit Scholar Qualifying Test. And that's the one traditionally, if you hear people say PSAT, some students sign up for it on a Saturday, that's the one traditionally that you're familiar with. That's measuring proficiency in the same, or at least very similar standards in math, in evidence-based reading, and then writing and language. And similar to what we've received in other assessments, students get a score for each area that they're assessed. So not just an overall total score, but kind of a sub-score, if you will. This is an important point, and people may not know this. PSAT also includes a college and career readiness indicator. And that's actually color-coded. So they use green, yellow, and red. Green is that you've met the benchmarks and you're college and career ready. And they, they have based this on what they see using their data, their prior SAT data, and student success in college, in specific college courses. So they've linked this, they've spent a lot of time and probably financial resources in developing this green, yellow, and red indicator. The yellow means you're within a year of those benchmarks, and the red is you're below the benchmark by, by more than one year. And so that's very important for us to look at, and I'll talk about why in just a little bit. One of the things you probably recognize is that our PSATs are, are allowed to be used as an alternative pathway to satisfy the DOE graduation assessment requirement. And so the assessment graduation requirement, if you recall, used to be the NJSLA. It's now, well, last year was supposed to be the NJGPA, but as you heard me a couple months ago, note that the NJGPA, it was waived for this year's seniors. But this year's juniors, this year's grade 11 students will have to take the NJGPA. And as of now, it is still their first pathway to graduation and achieving and meeting the graduation assessment requirement. The Department of Education has a whole list of secondary pathways. One of the pathways, again, is the PSAT. And they set out specific scores in terms of what, what is acceptable on the PSAT in order to meet that, that alternative assessment requirement. And ironically, it's not just students who score in the green. The, the green college and career readiness indicator has a particular score bracket, but it's actually most of the students in the yellow. And so I want us to look at that just a little bit more, and we're going to focus in on the PSAT NMSQT. And we're doing that because those are the students, those are 10th and 11th grade students, if you recall me saying that before. And so we've had those students when they were in 10th grade in the fall. That means we've had them for at least a year. So that we have had an opportunity to work with them and to see them grow. And so this data, I want to kind of orient you to it before we talk a little bit more about it. These are students who took the PSAT, NMSQT, and StartStrong. So they took both. So in math, that's geometry and algebra II. There were some in algebra I, although we can't report on that because it's less than 10, so that's why that's missing from the list. And then for English Language Arts, that's only grade 10, because if you recall, our ninth graders took the PSAT eight, nine. So for students who scored that, that acceptable secondary pathway score in reading and writing and in math, in our math bracket, 69% of our 10th and 11th graders are already showing that they're graduation-ready, and they've, they've met that graduation assessment requirement, just based on the PSAT. In English Language Arts, and again, this is our 10th graders, 79% of them have already met that graduation-ready alternative assessment pathway requirement. And so I want you to step back and think about the disparity there that we're seeing. So here, we're seeing 70% and close to 80% for English Language Arts are graduation-ready versus what you just saw a few slides ago in terms of our StartStrong data. And see, wow, that really contradicts each other. How is that possible, what's going on here? And so we have been digging into that, what's happening? And I can't say we have all the answers. I just want you to know that we are looking at that.
So 69, 70, 70% of our students who are 10th and 11th graders are graduation-ready in math in October when they took this test?
Yes.
Okay, several weeks earlier, what, three, four weeks earlier, they took the StartStrong?
Yes, not even.
And, and they're all over the map on the StartStrong.
Right.
So 70% of them are graduation-ready. They've met the state's graduation testing requirement, yet some of them need, quote, "a lot of support."
Strong support, yes.
And, and English Language Arts, it's 80% are graduation-ready, according to the state's requirements from, from the PSAT, yet they are, and I know you're not, they're sort of represented across the scale on, on StartStrong.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yes. Yeah, that's, so that's, it's a huge contradiction. It's something to think about.
Jessica, can I just ask a question?
Yes, you may.
Can you just go back to the prior slide where you talk about the scores for PSAT, eight to 38? How do those scores correlate to the numbers students and parents see? You know, 1,600 up to zero to 1,600? Or do they correlate?
There is a correlation. What the state is using is a times, times two and add a zero. Is that right, Dr.?
Yeah.
Right? So like if a student got, so one of the scores that they're supposed to get, the minimum score in math is a 22. And it's times two, which would be 44, and you add a zero, so 440.
Okay.
So it's not, they, they say you shouldn't really do that PSAT-SAT comparison, but that's what the, the state uses, at least as their calculation.
Gotcha, thank you.
And the PSAT does report on those smaller numbers.
Yeah.
So, and the state graduation requirements are keyed to those smaller numbers.
The smaller numbers, yes.
The tighter scale, I guess. I shouldn't say smaller numbers, yeah.
So we have these two kind of sometimes contradictory sources of data. So one of the things that we're looking at, and I gave you an example there in the right chart, the more colorful one, is what we then do is look at the individual assessments in StartStrong. So for the top one, for example, is geometry. And among the students who scored in the green for PSAT, who took the geometry, geometry StartStrong, excuse me, we look here at what the differences are, what the breakdown or the variance is among the StartStrong support levels. So of those students, 109 were in the less support, 30 were some support needed, 12 strong support needed. So student could be college and career-ready and graduation-ready, but they may have scored strong support needed on the StartStrong, and we're not sure why. Algebra II is really a good example of the variance in the StartStrong scores, with 49 and 49 for less support and some support needed, and then strong support needed 13. So you see that there is some variance and some, some kind of surprising data when you start to delve deeper into that. Go ahead, Mrs. O'Donnell.
Ask quickly, I was thinking about the number in the beginning of the presentation for Algebra I, strong support needed 58%. And I wonder how much of that comes from the sending districts and tracking, and here it looks like it's remedied.
Yes, and so that's, that's a question we're asking, right? And it's a regional high school, kind of, it will always be a conundrum of a regional high school and a challenge, because we do have four different sending districts and for similar curricula, but different, right? And different, sometimes math sequences especially. So we don't know what it is. We are working, that's one of the math goals, and I believe Mr. Cole talked about that last month, but making sure, our primary goal is to make sure all students are Algebra I-ready when they get here. Now, we do, the data shows that we are able to catch them up, right? But again, they took this test, this assessment, StartStrong assessment, in September and October, they took the PSAT. So very early on in the ninth grade year, which is why it's hard, we have disaggregated that data too, but it's harder to make judgments about it since we've only had them at that point for a month.
Well, and one of the factors, I'm sorry, Jessica.
That's okay.
But one of the factors that kind of creates that tracking is this thought that all of our seniors, all of our juniors must take certain math courses. So the, the sort of ring everybody's trying to grab as the carousel goes around is calculus, you know, by the end. And for a lot of students, that's valuable, but the tracking is speaking to that. And you've heard me say this before, in fourth, fifth grade, when, when a student's, you know, decision's being made about whether or not a student's going to be taking AP Calculus in 12th grade. We have two things that we're working on there, not only to ensure that ninth graders, if they haven't already taken algebra, are ready for algebra, because not all of them are, but also to ensure that on the other end of their experience, 11th and 12th grade, they have compelling mathematics choices, and they do in our program, but that they, that families believe that there are compelling mathematics choices outside of just calculus. So statistics, discrete math, computer science.
Right.
Those need to be, and we have a lot of work to do with colleges to make sure people are, are regarding those as valuable choices as well. And all the time that we spend over three, four years to catch someone up to get to pre-calc, even if they don't need it, is time that they aren't spending exploring other compelling math courses that might be more aligned to their aspirations.
Yeah.
I'm curious if you've actually had conversations with some of the students who might have done really well, not even just, you know, minimum here, really well on the PSAT because it had higher stakes and they cared about that test and did maybe very poorly.
Yes.
On StartStrong, that maybe the simple explanation is they just didn't care, and they just sat there and filled in, you know, C.
Yeah. I mean, anecdotally, yes. I don't, I don't want to put that as a data point, but anecdotally, yes. I mean, and especially with the NMSQT, because that qualifies them potentially for national merit. So that is more high stakes for them than a StartStrong assessment, which is not counting for anything, and maybe they don't believe to be valuable. Good. Okay, I promise, we're almost done. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Sue.
This is a fairly new test that we're doing, I guess, I think you said?
StartStrong, yes.
It's something that we have to do?
It, yes, unfortunately, and I hate to use that term, but it is something that we have to do. The state mandated it. Even though we already satisfied the federal testing requirement by doing NJSLA and NJGPA, the state thought it was valuable to do StartStrong again in the fall. And so it's disappointing, because we're, it takes away instructional time, takes away resources.
Well, and I'll share too, and again, not to belabor your time at the, you know, I'm sorry, Jessica, but this is, this is really interesting stuff. And that's an excellent question, Ms. Duggan, because we, the way we talk about it is, we have to administer it, you know, but the students don't have to do well on it. And what I, I was noticing, I guess it was when these scores kind of came out last month or earlier this month, the State Board of Ed was meeting and having a lot of conversation about how the students had done on the StartStrong. And here we are noting, well, goodness, how they do on StartStrong doesn't necessarily correlate to how they do on other assessments or on their course grades, which is the other piece that we talked about here.
That's the next piece, yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, beautiful segue. Okay. So we talked about importance of using multiple markers. You saw that the DOE, I use the quote from them, that we should be looking at common assessments and diagnostic measures and course grades. And so we do this anyway. When we have assessment results and maybe students are scoring in the low range of the assessment results, that doesn't necessarily mean they need an intervention. That could mean a whole bunch of different things. So we, we want to make sure we compare it to other sources of data. So here, what you're looking at is students who scored in the lowest reporting groups for both of those assessments, so the PSAT and the StartStrong. And for math, again, that was either one of the algebras or geometry, and then in English, that's the ELA-10. So who scored? There were 219 students, or 19% of the students who took the test, that scored in the lowest reporting groups for PSAT and StartStrong. And then we compare that to course averages, and typically what we look at is like a C- minus or lower as being, there's, there's an indicator there, something's going on. And when we looked at that, who, we added that third data point, it wound up identifying just 67 of the students who took the math assessment. So that was roughly 1,100 students. So that comes out to about 6%. So 67% of our 10th and 11th graders, we have identified as potentially being at risk.
67 students, not 67%.
Sorry, 6% and 67 students. This doesn't automatically trigger a million interventions, right? We have to delve into that. So is it a particular skill? Is it they just haven't, is their course grade low because they haven't handed in an assessment, right? There's, there's many different reasons. And it struck me when Dr. Moore was saying, each student, that's exactly what we do here with the 67. We look at each student. Each student's plan now becomes different, depending on what they need. And then in English, the data is similar, and remember, this is one grade level, right? So that's why the student number is different, but the percentages look a little bit similar. So again, students who scored in the lowest for ELA-10 StartStrong, and the English portion of the PSAT was 74 students or 14%. But then when we compare that to course grades, students who then had that third marker, C-minus or lower, was 17 students or 3% of the 10th graders. And so that's, again, when we look at each student. And I will tell you, each year, even pre-COVID, what we would traditionally see is about 30 to 70 students per year who were at this same point. They hadn't met the graduation assessment requirement, and we needed to have a sort of intervention plan for them, whether it was preparing them for another assessment or just putting them in a tutorial or an RTI model. So this is on par with what we've traditionally seen, possibly even a little bit better, to be honest with you. So again, that is the importance, and that's why I highlighted it in yellow. That is how we go about identifying our at-risk students and students who are in need. And I did want to draw your attention to the, the disproportionals that we see. And it should not be surprising to you, we've talked about it before, I think you've seen it in a prior slide even. Down on those two charts below, the blue is the percent that the students made up of the testing population, and the orange is the percent they make up in the at-risk data markers, that group that's highlighted in yellow up there. So when you look at that, 7% of students, of our Asian students for math, were a part of the testing groups, but 6% were identified at risk versus our Black and African American students, for example. They made up 5% of the testing group, but 10% of the at-risk. So they're overrepresented in the at-risk groups versus the Asian students who are a little underrepresented. And these are trends we've seen before, but you can see there, if the orange bar is higher than the blue, that's an overrepresentation. And that's something we're, we're looking at, you know, we have our CARES policy now and our, our school-wide equity goals, it's something we're paying attention to. And so, oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. O'Donnell, go ahead.
Want to slow you down with this, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I just wanted to know, in terms of, does the IEP category also capture 504 plans?
It does not. It's just IEPs.
And a student with an IEP taking that StartStrong test, are there any accommodations that apply to standardized tests?
Yes, there are accommodations, and state-required accommodations. So extended time, they can have enlarged print, they could have a reader, they could have different contrasts, but a little bit different sometimes than accommodations they might get in class. Good question.
And PSAT has accommodations, but that's a different menu as well.
Much di, and ironically, even though our students did better on PSAT, they have way less accommodations, because their, the college board's requirement for extended time is so strict.
And our ELL students, what is the, the nuances of the test for them in terms of language and content?
I mean, as you can imagine, it's, it's very difficult for them, especially the PSAT. And we actually, for our multilingual learners, offered them, we offered them the choice, do they, did they want to take the assessment or not? And less than 10 actually opted to take the PSAT, which is why you don't see them as a reporting group up there.
So, yeah, and that's an important point, that our ELL, our English So, yeah, and that's an important point, that our ELL, our English language learners are not represented in this combination that well because not all of them took both tests. But with our English language learners who are in the ELL program, they have the Access WIDA test and other additional sort of assessments that we can use to gauge there. So we aren't missing information on them, but they are missing a bit from this sort of narrowing down to our, you know, 219 to 67, but they're already receiving a pretty intensive intervention through their program.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, last slide. So what do we do with all this? These are considerations, these are things we're wondering, our next steps. As we noted, there is a contradiction from the Department of Education on what exactly to do with the Start Strong data, and that's still something we're wrestling with. So we're kind of, you can see, we're not using that alone. That has to be a data point that we use with other data, such as PSAT and course grades. Start Strong and PSAT are not completely aligned, as you also saw, even though ironically they're based on the same standards. And so we have to figure that one out. Why is that, why are the results then not completely agreeing? And then the language for the Start Strong reporting, as I noted earlier, doesn't align with the PSAT college and career readiness levels. So again, we were equating that green and yellow from PSAT that was either within the benchmarks or a year within the benchmarks to Start Strong's, less support may be needed and some support may be needed. Very confusing language from the Start Strong reporting. And so all of this to say, we're just continuing to focus on using multiple forms of assessment. We can't use one assessment. I would urge, and I do urge, if parents are calling me worried because they got the Start Strong report and it says strong support may be needed, not to worry too much. This is just one assessment. How is your student, how'd they do on PSAT? How are they doing in their course? Talk to the teacher. And so that's what we've been advising to do, and that's what we'll continue to do. So I don't know if there are any questions, but that is the end of the presentation. I'm sorry to take a little bit longer than I had planned.
Only one comment from me, and then the questions, piggybacking off of the point you just made. We receive, so we have to administer this test. Students take it. We have to send the individual score reports home to their parents.
Yes.
So we have parents receiving individual score reports on the Start Strong that say that your child is in need of strong support on a test that, based on a test, so they've received those independent score reports when?
They should have received them about 10 days ago.
So those received 10 days ago on a test that they took in September.
Right.
That was maybe 10 questions.
Yes.
And several weeks later, they took a PSAT that they might have, 70%, 80% of them anyway, may have already met their graduation requirements through.
Right.
All right. I just wanted to admire that for a moment, because it's a frustrating fact for us.
Yes, very frustrating.
Because it creates confusion in the community and it creates communications questions for us as well, as we worked through, well, what does this letter say about this test?
That's right. We did not use the DOE suggested letter.
Yeah.
We wrote our own to kind of signal that this was no cause for alarm necessarily.
So it's difficult stuff, but at the end of the day, it's also taking up the time and resources for scores that we don't, that we have to pile into others in order to get actionable information from.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I know there are some questions.
Some questions.
Is your button on?
Yep.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. Looking at this backed up a little bit from over a number of years, could you give us a little perspective over several years as to how the state DOE has continued or not continued to provide us or require us to make different tests every few years?
Yeah.
That affect our local reporting and assessment standards? Do we have any way of responding to the state with some information as to how, this is the third time you've done this in the last 10 years, and it's really costing a lot of resources, and we'd appreciate it if you come up with something more consistent or, I mean, because it seems to me I've heard this song before.
Yes. So let me say two things. Rather than go through the whole history, that's a good student life and program conversation, and that's another, that's a three-hour conversation probably, right? Let me say two things. This year is the first time that I called the board's attorney and got a billable hour with her to talk about what if we ignore this and just don't do it? That's the first time that I've ever called a board attorney to say, what happens if I don't do what the state is telling me to do? And I'm not the only one. Across the state, I've heard that more and more from my colleagues. So there's an indication of sort of where we are in terms of a level of frustration with this. And I've hinted at it a little bit, but there's a good anecdotal data point for you as we're talking about data points. The other thing I'll say is, we, to get actionable information on each child, timely actionable information on each child, we have to give additional assessments. Additional assessments that correlate much better to the state's end-of-course assessments, right? Our Lincoln assessments correlate very strongly to our NJGPA, NJSLA, whichever, I don't know, Jess, whichever.
Both.
Yeah. But this, this was useless to us. I don't mind saying it quite so blankly and so, but this was useless to us. And I'm proud of Jess, not only for all of the work that she's done to make room for this and help it happen and fit in all of the other testing that we have to do, and then allow teachers as much time as we can to get through tough curriculums that they've written to really answer what the kids want and what they need. But Jessica's been networking with her colleagues across the state, and this information, these comparisons are things that we're going to be talking about with our colleagues and presenting back to the Department of Ed as a comment on what this means to us and what it doesn't mean to us.
Is there any ability for you, talking to our colleagues or our talking to other districts, to develop and compare common assessment tools, like Lincoln, for instance, which we are finding very successful?
Yeah.
Do other schools, other like schools find it the same way? And can we connect with them to build a stronger understanding of it?
Well, and the hope through the past several years is that the state, because they, I guess they felt they had to be responsive to this notion of alternative assessments to begin with. PSAT, SAT, these are allowed to be alternative graduation requirements because everybody pushed on them and said, it can't just be about this park that you've never given before. You know, it's got to be about, because we have students doing very well on PSAT, SAT, very successful, very well, you know, doing very well in their grades, but they're not doing well on Park, you know? And a lot of parents were understandably not even participating in Park, you know? So the state opened that for us. And so I am hopeful that they'll come to see that. What I have to say is, you know, we get complaints from our teachers, and I feel so awful about it. We are doing way too much testing.
Yes.
But I have to say, the amount of testing that we actually get valuable information from is a fraction of the testing that we're doing.
That's a shame.
Yes.
And I, we need the valuable information.
Yes.
But it's January, and we're talking about diagnostic scores that were on a test that was administered with 10 questions in September.
Right.
You know, what good does that do? I'm sorry. But what good does it do us is the sum, I think, of Jessica and my conversation about all of this over the past several weeks.
Yes. Mrs. Peterson, did you have a question?
I just, I know that this can change at any minute, but is there any indication whether they are, the state is looking to require this again next year?
Yes, I just asked that question last week in the governance kind of committee on one of my organizations, and that is the question I asked. And they said, right now, the commissioner is not sure. They're looking at the data to see if it's worthwhile. And so I made a similar plug, maybe stronger, maybe a little more strongly worded, saying that it really is not valuable to us and providing this information to them as an example as to why it's not super valuable and we prefer to do something different. Mrs. O'Donnell.
So it seems that Start Strong has some correlation to pressure on NJDOE to have more data points with regards to COVID and possible learning loss.
Yes.
When we already have good assessment tools.
Right.
So it's sort of a worst-case scenario. We're doing more testing and using up more resources, and we could be addressing any emotional or academic issues by doing less testing.
Right. It's ironic, we used an instructional block to administer a test that didn't give us information to help combat any learning gaps when we could have spent the instructional block addressing learning gaps, yes. So that's a good note maybe to end on.
Well, and to be certain, it measures something.
Yes.
Otherwise, everyone would be getting the same score. It measures something.
Something.
And it's important to note that the patterns that we see, disproportionals, overrepresentation, underrepresentation in different brackets, that we see those here as well, we're just not sure what it's measuring. And I guess that's what, it may be measuring kids' engagement to take a 10-question test in September. It could be just measuring that, in which case, that's valuable to know, but I don't know, you know, we've spent a lot of time talking about it tonight.
Yes, sorry.
And it's certainly, if that's all it's measuring, not something that's valuable for us to know in January.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. All right. So one more thing though, Jess, I'm going to ask you to introduce the next presentation. Again, thank you all for your patience as we go through all of this. We're going to, we're continuing on with our departmental presentations, and so we have Dr. Hall, who I think the last time we brought him before you was Mr. Hall, and now he is Dr. Hall. So we are proud of that for him. But he's going to walk us through some of these questions and issues, but through a science lens.
Yeah.
And away, away we go. Is he using your computer or does he need to switch out?
He is, and I don't need to say much because Dr. Hall's a really nice presentation prepared for you all. But those of you who saw our math and English presentation, you'll see that science is in a different place, especially in terms of assessment, and Dr. Hall will talk about that. And so they're also in a different place in terms of sequencing and what we offer in terms of science. So I'd ask you to pay special attention to that, and then without further ado, Dr. Matthew Hall.
Thank you. All right. Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. I have the privilege of being the science supervisor here, and I'm excited tonight to give you an update about our science program, our annual update. Don't worry, I will talk about assessment. So we're not through that yet. And I will try to remember to alert you when I advance the slide. So going to the first slide, I thought it would, it would make sense to start tonight by talking about our department goals and how they really cascade from the board's goals. And so the board obviously has two goal areas, physical and emotional wellness for all, and equity and inclusivity. And the science department goals come directly for those. For example, within that physical and emotional wellness for all, one of our big focuses is really maintaining consistency among the various course offerings that we have here, especially courses that are taught by multiple teachers, and making sure that expectations for grading, assessment practices, and homework are similar across teachers, make sense, are fair and flexible for the students. This year, coming out of several years of abnormal schooling, I guess we'll call it, we really, as a department, we wanted to reset our focus, reset expectations for students, routines that go on in the classroom, and to reset our focus from one that was reactive to how do we teach in a remote setting, how do we teach in a post-pandemic setting, those types of things, to really resetting our focus on thoughtful and intentional classroom instruction. And we've been talking also a lot this year about building students' self-efficacy and making sure that students are connecting this idea that the effort that they put into their schoolwork is actually resulting in something, that their grades, their success is a manifestation of the effort they put in and not just, you know, something that occurs because, you know, an adult decides, you know, you get an A, B, C, or what have you. In terms of equity and inclusivity, much of the department work is focused around this goal area. Maintaining equitable and inclusive classroom environments, prioritizing relationship building. We continue to try to personalize the learning experiences for each student and to offer learning experiences that resonate with different, with student interests. I know in the past, we've talked about our biomedical science academy, and that would be an example of that. We're also looking for opportunities to expand representation within the curriculum, making sure that we're tapping into cultural relevance and things like that, and really being very aware of the potential for negative messaging, especially that negative messaging that's happening, you know, unintentionally, right? Like microaggressions and those kinds of things. Advancing the slides. In pursuing these goals, the department enjoys several important advantages. I would say our biggest advantage is the science department staff themselves. I'm very fortunate to have a team of teachers who are highly committed to the work that they do and to their students. They're absolutely committed to their students. We enjoy, you know, I would be remiss if I didn't, again, thank the board. You know, we're very fortunate here to have a very supportive Board of Education and the rest of the administrative staff as well here. I'm fortunate to be in a community that, where science education is highly valued, right? And STEM careers are attractive to many students. So it's not hard to sell this idea of science is important to students. They come pre-equipped with that belief. We do have some challenges, of course. The one that rears its head every year is staffing, and the fact that qualified staff are hard to find. And so when we think about the fact that we have a very, very highly effective staff, whenever we need to replace someone, it's tough to find someone who can join that team and, you know, and shine within that team, especially when our candidate pools seem to be shrinking and getting smaller and smaller. You know, we are still grappling with understanding the learning impacts that the recent, you know, that can't come out of the pandemic. Well, it's nothing new to science, but politicization of scientific and educational issues, you know, has always been a challenge for science education and continues to be. We just, we just heard, you know, a detailed presentation about assessment, and assessments from the DOE and those kinds of things. Quality science assessments that measure the next-generation science standards are in short supply. They're just, they're very hard to find, they're not available. These tests that we're administering are not measuring the types of learning that we are trying to prepare our students with. We talked about Start Strong. I had written it was of limited value. I thought that that would be a nice way to say it. I think it, you know, I think we've heard that, that there's really not a lot that comes out of there that's of use. We're still making sense, or trying to make sense of it. And our NJSLA science assessment is another one of those things that's relatively new, and we're orienting our self to that data, figuring out what does a baseline look like and what does it mean within the context of our science program. And then one of the challenges that we've been working with our sending district partners on is the fact that our rising ninth-grade students are uncomfortable with inquiry learning. And much of our science program is inquiry-driven learning, and I'll get into that in And I'll get into that in a little bit more detail in a moment. Okay. So, we have, I've outlined our goals, I've talked about our assets and our challenges. So there's quite a bit of work that we have been doing and will continue to do. One of the things that I wanted to just assure the board is that work is driven by data and it's driven by research. And so I'll share some of that to show you how that is going. So, I may just skip over this one, but I advanced to the Start Strong assessment. That's something that we have been looking at, and really, in mining sort of meaning out of it, really all of value that has come out of it is what has already been stated, and that those disproportionality, especially among black students, rears its head in science, just like we see it rearing its head in math and English language arts. And that's something that we really need to get our hands around and figure out why is that happening and how, what can we do about it. I mentioned earlier that high-quality assessments are in short supply. So what we have decided to do within the science department is begin to make our own assessments. So, we are using Linkit, just like English and math, but the assessments that exist in Linkit for science were not suitable. We didn't have the same type of assessment library that those other two subject areas did. And those are currently in development right now. So we're probably looking at Linkit coming out with some NJSLA-aligned science assessments within the next two years. And we feel like we can't really wait that long to do this work. So we have been putting together our own assessments, benchmark assessments, for each of our core classes. And when I say core classes, I'm talking about environmental and earth science for our ninth graders, biology for our 10th graders, chemistry and physics for our 11th and 12th graders. So we have benchmark assessments that are standards-aligned and derive directly from our own curriculum. And what we are doing this year is we are really, I guess the best way to phrase it would be we're field-testing them. So we're administering them, then looking at the data as a department, identifying any problem items, questions that need to be adjusted or removed, things that are either too easy or too hard, or the students misinterpreted it, and fine-tuning those assessment tools, and also establishing a baseline for performance, because the same assessment is administered to our honors level, our CP level, and our general level. So we want to make sure we understand, you know, what does performance, what does the expected performance look like at each of those levels? And then ultimately, we hope to use those assessments to be identifying students who may be in courses, in course levels that are under their ability level. So that's one of our big goals with these benchmarks. And that work has been progressing. We're, we've taken a good, hard look at our first benchmark. Our second benchmark will be administered in the next several weeks, and we will continue this work. Ultimately, next year, we expect to have a full set of four benchmarks for our core classes online. Advancing the slide again. There are other resources that we also use to collect data on things other than student performance. I mentioned earlier that consistency is an important outcome with our work within the department, within our PLC teams. And one of the things I wanted to share with you is a rubric we use for periodic consistency audits that we do within the PLC team. And basically, how that works is, a couple of times a year, the PLC team will sit down, they self-score, and then they identify the places where consistency is not happening, and then set goals. And it really, the conversations that happen within those groups is rich. So this really is a tool that I would say the best outcome is it catalyzes really good conversations, and has really moved us into a much more consistent program.
So are they sharing their homework assignments and sharing their assessments so they can see what the other teachers are doing?
They often will. When I, a few years ago, when we started this, that was not common at all for, well, as common. Some teachers, you would have pockets of sharing, but not necessarily across an entire course. You may have, for example, honors biology, there might have been two different versions of that going on. And when I say two different versions, I mean the sequence of topics was two different versions. Certain topics were, some teachers would go into it in much more depth than others. And then the tests and quizzes and things like that were very different. And at this point, there is a lot of sharing that's happening. I use that biology just as one of the examples. But to continue with that example, they actually have set up a Google Classroom where they share worksheets, lab ideas, quizzes, tests, like they have all of those things available to everybody within the team. The sequence of topics is common, the pacing is common, there are common assessments that happen, and then the benchmark assessments are common as well. Whoop. I mashed the buttons here. So we have seen a lot of growth in that consistency area. It's, you know, that's one of those things we're not going to let up on, we'll continue with that. But it has become routine conversation and not new conversation.
I'm glad to see that there's focus on that, because when my kids were here, there was huge, huge discrepancies based on, you know, which teacher you had. I mean, one could have three hours of homework a night, and the other could have 10 minutes. And one could have, you know, tests that were like easy As, and the other were really challenging. Same exact class, same exact level.
Yeah. And there are, so, when I talked about the goals, I sort of nestled this under the wellness side, but it falls under that equity side as well, for lots of reasons. And not just because it's equitable to have a similar experience, you know, independent of who your teacher is. But it also, if it's, if your courses are not consistent like that, then kids get on rails, right? Like if you're in a certain level, and the sequence of topics, to stick with the biology example, if the sequence of topics for CP biology differs from honors biology, and your teacher identifies, hey, you really should move up, well, it's very difficult to make that transition. So we maintain those sequences throughout the levels for that equity reason. It enables this movement based on best fit versus that's where you started, so you're sort of stuck there.
Dr. Hall, just a quick point. It's easy to look at this and see a tension between sort of teacher academic freedom and a lockstep approach. And that's not how I see to approach it. We're trying to figure out, you know, teachers need to be able to teach in a way that they're expressing to kids, here's who I am, here's what I'm interested in. So I don't ever want to see the, here's the, it's Wednesday in, you know, January, whatever, and everybody's doing this today. You know, that's not something that I'm interested in seeing. But one of the ways that we're approaching that, again, is through all of these data, by offering all this data to teachers, we're hopeful that we can get to this point where at least we have a common measurement and understanding of what every kid needs. And then we can then get into, well, how do we personalize the experience to the point that, you know, we're matching teachers and students for relationship purposes based on what we might see as good fits, rather than just rolling the dice on the scheduler? So, there's a lot of tough, good work to do there. But I don't want folks to take away that we want it so lockstep that there's no choice, right? Because that flies in the face of everything that we're trying to model. And you're not saying that by any means, but I want to make sure.
No, that's an important point. I mean, going back to an earlier point that I made, we, our goal is to recruit the best teachers that we can get.
Yeah.
If we were to do that and then hand them all the same script, we would, you know, that doesn't make any sense. So we do need them to exercise their agency and choice and their own personality and all those kinds of things, within the, you know, sort of the boundaries of a consistent experience. So not the same experience, but a consistent one. That's an important distinction. So thank you. Okay. So, we talked about data that we're collecting. I gave you a sampling of that. Also, research that we're looking into. I thought I would share sort of the, one of the latest pieces of research that we've been looking at as a department, and actually spent some time in one of our earlier in-service looking at. There was a consensus study that came out from the National Academies in 2019 that has been published, which really was designed to look at NGSS teaching, and, you know, what was, what did schools need to do? So they surveyed a lot of outcomes of various schools. NGSS went into action back in 2016. And so the purpose of the study was to provide guidance to educators on how to best engage middle and high school students in making sense of phenomena within the science classroom. And so there were seven recommendations that came out of this report, and two of those recommendations were particularly relevant to high school science classes. And so, those are two that we've been looking at and talking about how to operationalize. The first one is that science investigation really should be the central focus of science classes. So in other words, science classes are about investigating phenomena. They're not about memorizing facts and new vocabulary. And so that's not new. That's work that we've been doing, you know, but this was encouraging, you know, basically keep on what we're doing. The emphasis really is around phenomena now. And so that's, you know, we can, you know, we're talking a lot about phenomena. In addition, wherever possible, those phenomena should be locally and culturally relevant. And that, you know, ties back into our inquiry work as well. You know, for example, you know, recently, in the biology classes, again, I know I'm sort of overusing the biology example, but they were in an ecology unit, and they'd been talking about invasive species and the problem of that. And some of the examples that were being used were invasive species in London, right? Which, great, but not locally and culturally relevant. How do we shift that? Because, by the way, we have plenty of those here, right? Plenty of invasive species here that we can focus on. And, you know, and it would be much more relevant to the students, right, than learning about the, you know, certain weeds that are impacting real estate values in London. Okay. Recommendation number two, instruction should have multiple embedded... Back online here. So multiple embedded opportunities for students to engage in three-dimensional science and engineering performances. And I know in the past, I've talked about the three dimensions of the NGSS. I have a handy graphic here on the next slide to take a look. But really, what that means is starting with a phenomena and thinking about what are the, you know, what are the underlying knowledge, understanding, and skills that are, that the student, that you want the students to get out of, to use that phenomena to understand, and ultimately, to be able to communicate an evidence-based argument or explanation for what causes the phenomenon. So again, this is different from a multiple-choice test, you know, that's asking students to define or fill in the missing blank, or that kind of thing, the types of things that we see on assessments like Start Strong. So a little bit about inquiry. And I mentioned before that one of our biggest challenges is that our rising ninth-graders, they're uncomfortable with inquiry learning experiences. And what that looks like is, you know, they want to know what the right answer is. And there's not always a right answer in science. And sometimes it's more about the process, and why they think a certain explanation is right, and what evidence they're citing to defend that claim, versus, but is this right? And it's much more student-driven and not teacher-led. And so we do have students who feel uncomfortable with that, and so we're working to help them. We're changing some of our ninth-grade initial science lessons to scaffold that more, to get them more used to student-driven learning. And it's not really surprising, inquiry is difficult. It's one of those difficult topics in science education, because it means lots of different things in science. Inquiry is a way that scientists work. It's also a pedagogical approach, and you really can't pick up anything about science education, any kind of article or journal entries or anything like that, that doesn't refer to inquiry. And yet, often, teachers are confused about what that means. And so we're, you know, we're spending time ironing that out, and making sure that everybody feels comfortable with those types of pedagogical approaches. And frankly, it's my expectation that inquiry instruction predominates the methods that we use here.
Dr. Hall, I'm curious, are you seeing more discomfort in those students post-pandemic? Or is this something just historically has been difficult for, you know, incoming high schoolers to grasp, this type of...
Historically, it has been difficult. It seems to be more difficult the last two years, based on what we're hearing from staff, what we're hearing from parents, and my own conversations with students, where they feel like, well, the teacher's not telling me what the right answer is. They're saying, what do you think it is? And things like that, and feeling frustrated. And so, helping students to, so sometimes there is a struggle, but we want that to be a productive struggle, and for that to feel safe, and not about, well, am I going to get points off, and is this on the test, and those types of things.
And just for you to confirm, inquiry learning is inherently more social?
Yes.
That's why I asked.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And that's an important connection to make. You know, there was, we're seeing, it was isolating learning virtually. And it's difficult to do inquiry learning virtually. And so coming out of that experience, sometimes people get stuck, right? And we, you know, part of my job is to help them get unstuck, and to work with my colleagues in the sending districts to try and help their folks get unstuck. But we've taken some trips, and middle school tends to be more teacher-led, and so that's a transition, and it's one that we're aware of, and we're all working together on. And understanding that it can look different, right? Like inquiry learning can look different. One of the slides I shared is really, it shows how inquiry could be more or less teacher-directed. teacher-directed or learner-driven. And so when I mentioned before that we're working with the ninth graders to be more comfortable, what that looks like in practice is we're starting on the left and working our way right. And, and on the left being more teacher-directed and moving towards more student-driven and in a much more intentional way than we were before. Other things we're doing, the, the standards every five years get updated and science is no exception. So we were alerted that there were updates to the NJSLS science. We went through them to identify all of the places where they had changed. And it really was only three places and they were relatively minor changes for the high school. And frankly, all it was is they want us to emphasize climate change more. I say us as New Jersey public educators. When we went and looked at our curriculum to determine what we needed to change, we were already emphasizing climate change in all of those places. So no changes needed. But of course, that was work that had to be done to determine that. Climate change is, is useful as a phenomenon, right? It's a phenomenon that is locally and culturally relevant and which is connected to pretty much all of our core science areas and lots of different topics. And so I share some of those here. And so that has been a thread that runs through our whole program and, and will continue to and, and lets us check all those change boxes too. So that was sort of nice to see. Okay. So really, some highlights about our work this year. I, I promised that I wasn't going to go into depth of the history of the NGSS this, this time. So I'm sorry you missed out on that. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Thank you, Dr. Hall.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Raise the, the screen on us here. All right. So with that, Mrs. Hughes, my report is concluded and I appreciate everybody's good questions and thoughts through all of that as we move now into the organizational items. But I guess we have residence form before then. Yes.
Thank you.
All right.
Now we'll move into our first residence form. Just a reminder that this is for action items only on the agenda, meaning an item that is up for vote by the board tonight. Seeing nobody interested in speaking on action items, we'll move right into organizational items. Mrs. Spitzer, would you like to read into the minutes the tallied votes for vice president from the January 3rd Board Reorg meeting, please?
Yes. At the January 3rd Board of Education meeting, there were two nominations, two nominees for Board Vice President, Mr. Fowler and Ms. Kellogg. The result of the paper ballot was as follows. Mrs. Blutfeld voted for Mrs. Kellogg. Mr. Davidson voted for Mrs. Kellogg. Mrs. Duggan voted for Mr. Fowler. Mr. Fowler abstained. Mrs. Hughes voted for Mrs. Kellogg. Mrs. Kellogg voted for Mrs. Kellogg. Mrs. O'Donnell voted for Mrs. Kellogg. Mrs. Peterson voted for Mr. Fowler. And Mr. Reimer voted for Mr. Fowler. With that tally, Mrs. Kellogg was nominated and elected as Board Vice President.
Thank you, Mrs. Spitzer. We have our, one, two, three, four, five.
Six.
Six HIBs from December. Can I have a motion, please, to affirm 008, 009, 11, 12, 13, and 14?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Excuse me. The only thing I'll share is, is those of you who weren't present for those presentations, it would certainly be appropriate if you wanted to, to abstain.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld, abstain. Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Abstain.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Abstain.
Mrs. Peterson?
Abstain.
With the majority of yes.
You didn't ask me for my vote.
Oh, Mrs. Hughes.
Yes.
Sorry.
I would take it personally. Yes.
With the majority of votes of those who voted, the motion carries.
Thank you, Mrs. Spitzer. And then I need a motion to approve the following three policies on first read. 152, 161, 162 on board officers, adjournment cancellation, and notice of board meetings. So moved.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion in two seconds. Any discussion?
Dr. Moore, would you be willing to explain a little bit about first read versus second read and that these aren't final after?
Yes. Yeah, good. Thank you, Mrs. Kellogg.
Thank you.
So each policy, according to our bylaws, will typically go through two readings. There are situations where you can accelerate that to one reading. I've never seen that done here and frankly, I haven't really seen the need for that. But we typically go through two readings and our bylaws are part of our policy manuals. So those are subject to that requirement. What we put on the agenda in the first reading, which these are all first readings, we put the summary of the policy changes, which comes from our policy vendor. If it's a policy that's coming from them, sometimes we'll, we'll do a presentation or a summary on policies that we write on our own. We'll include the current policy and then also the proposed policy that includes a lot of redlining and markup and where there are options, we've selected options usually. And so your vote on the policy at this point doesn't approve it to go into the policy book. Next month, you would vote, any of these that went forward on an affirmative vote, you would vote again next month on a second reading to put them in the policy book. Beforehand, they can go through, you know, a lot of committee or other deliberations to get, you know, all the options and changes ironed out. Between now and second read, we even have the option to make some changes, although those can get to a point where we'd want to decide to put it through a first reading again if, if we, if we felt that that was necessary. So all policies that I've seen here on this board go through two readings over on our current schedule, of course, at two months.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Any other questions or comments on this motion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. The next few items on our agenda speak to board committees. Just sort of a refresher, after our reorganization meeting, each year we need to establish our standing committees for the calendar year, not the school year. So we have a motion here for our standing committees. We have a new committee, the Communications Committee, and we're also re-establishing the Ad-Hoc Negotiations Committee. So can I have a motion, please, and a second to establish for the 23 calendar year, the Student Life and Program?
Yep.
Committee? Yeah, sorry. Operations and Transportation Committee, Personnel Committee, Racism, Equity, and Diversity Committee, the new Communications Committee, and a continuation of the Negotiations Ad-Hoc Committee.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is for information only. It is the Committee and Liaison Appointments, which are in the full discretion of the Board President. They're listed here for information only. Student Life and Program, Mr. Davidson will be chair with Mr. Fowler and Mrs. O'Donnell on that committee. Operations and Transportation, Mr. Fowler will be chair with Mr. Davidson and Mrs. Duggan. Personnel, Mrs. Blutfeld will be chair with Ms. Kellogg and Mr. Reimer. Racism and Equity and Diversity, Mrs. O'Donnell will be chair with Mrs. Blutfeld on that committee as well. Our Communications Committee will be chaired by Mrs. Kellogg and Mrs. Peterson will be on that committee. And the Ad-Hoc Negotiations Committee will continue to be myself and Mrs. Blutfeld, just so that it's clear the president is able to be on every committee, so I'm not named on a particular committee other than the Ad-Hoc Negotiations Committee. We also have several liaison appointments with outside and internal organizations. We have the Hundredan County Educational Services Commission, and Mrs. Duggan will serve as liaison for that committee. Hundredan County Polytech, Mrs. O'Donnell will serve as liaison for that organization. And then we have two internal district committees. The new Home and School Association Committee that Mr. Brant has spearheaded and Mrs. Blutfeld will be the board liaison for that committee. And we have a new Hundredan Central Technology Steering Committee, and Mr. Fowler will serve as the board liaison for that committee. So there's no action on those items. Conversely, there are two delegate appointments that require board action, and those are the delegates for New Jersey School Board Association and Hundredan County School Boards Association. So I'm going to be seeking a motion in a second to appoint Mrs. Peterson as the New Jersey School Boards Association Delegate and Mr. Reimer as the Hundredan County School Boards Association Delegate.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion on that item? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. And Mrs. Spitzer, I think I asked at the January reorg if your office could gather contact information, particularly for the outside organizations, and if there's an available meeting schedule to share with the board members? That would be really helpful. Thank you. I just want to take a moment and thank the board members for graciously committing their time and energy to these committees. In addition to our monthly board meetings, they take up a lot of time every month. Some of these committee meetings run several hours each month. We are working on a schedule. We're trying to coordinate so that folks don't have to be out a couple of nights during the week for different committees. But it is challenging, as you can imagine, with five committees and a couple of ad hoc and some internal district committees. We're hoping to have a schedule out this week, if not early next week. And we will be starting our formal committee meetings in February, which typically take place the second week of the month, but it may vary from time to time. And just a reminder as to the process for those committees, there is a chair, as I just mentioned, for each of the committees. Once the committee meeting occurs, meetings will be put together by the staff or administrator on that committee. They will be circulated amongst the entire board by Dr. Moore. We ask that you please review those minutes carefully. If there's any questions, particularly about a committee that you haven't sat on, which is more likely where the questions are going to come from, to please reach out to the committee chair first. That's sort of the first line of attack. Reach out to the committee chair and ask any questions about the minutes. And then we could sort of take next steps if there continue to be questions, so that everybody is best prepared when we come to the table at our action meeting to have discussions and have votes on the items that are in our committee reports. And I think that covers it for committees. We, again, do not have committee reports this month because we're just still reorganizing and just established our committees for this year. We do have several action items under the different committee categories. So Dr. Moore is going to take a minute. Did I miss one?
School Board Recognition Month.
Of course I did. I hate the School Board Recognition motion. Sorry. Can I please have a motion to approve the resolution that Dr. Moore read through earlier for School Board Recognition Month?
So moved.
Thank you. Can I have a motion? I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion?
Second.
Is there any discussion other than a general awkwardness discussing this?
Thank you all.
Yes. Will, will there be cake?
Let's move on.
Not tonight.
Not tonight, unfortunately.
Hearing no comments or questions. Mrs. Spitzer, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes, thank you.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you very much. So Dr. Moore is just going to quickly go through the agenda and highlight some of the action items. This agenda was shared with the board just about a week ago, I believe, last Tuesday. So we've had just about a week to digest it, ask questions about it, and the like. So this is going to look a little different than our other meetings, that we're not having chairs give committee reports. But be assured that the board has been provided this agenda and the information behind the action items.
Thank you. So under Student Life and Program, we just have a motion this month. We, we were working to keep the agenda lean, given that we didn't have committee meetings this month, but we have just a motion for two new clubs that were applied for through Mr. Brant's office and Mr. Cohen. And so you have the applications there for a Music Production Club and the Society of Young Authors Club.
So moved.
So someone needs to make the motion. I can't make the motion.
I'll make a motion to, I thought that was the motion. Okay, make a motion to approve the following, the two new clubs that we're having, Music Production and the Society of Young Authors Club.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion about those two clubs? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Sorry. Can you explain a little bit about how these clubs come to be? And I believe we're only allowed to propose clubs twice a year.
Yeah, so we're working toward a schedule of, of clubs being proposed twice a year. This is our first year of that. And, and Mr. Cohen is, is the new member of the administrative team of Dean of Students has been overseeing that with Mr. Brant. But, so, so we have had some off-schedule because there have been efforts by students to put some clubs together for a very long time. And so when they found the requisite number of members and then also the advisor and filled out all of the other information, we wanted to make sure that they could get underway. So we're moving towards that twice-a-year schedule. But you may see some off-schedule here and there, and you have already this year. Now, we have policy and reg on the exact requirements for proposing a club and what it needs to get approved. And those are more or less encapsulated on the application form that you see there as, as an executive attachment. There are student names on that, so that's, that's a confidential attachment for the board. But, yeah, moving forward, we're going to try to, try to bucket those twice a year so that they aren't coming up constantly.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I have a quick question. Is there a requirement for the number of students who would be interested in joining the club or?
Yes. So the regulation, I believe, speaks to 10. Our form asks for 12, only to give us a little bit of a, of a buffer. So if, if students came forward with 10 and we were confident that they were all involved and engaged, we would allow that to come to you. But I believe the form asks for 12.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you. Operations and Transportation, Dr. Moore, is there anything you'd like to point out?
So only that each month, under Operations and Transportation, you're going to see these three motions. These come up each month, right, Mrs. Spitzer? And so you have your financial reports. These are the Treasurer and Board Secretary's report that you view each month. Invoices, your approval to pay invoices each month. And then if there are any budgetary transfers between accounts, those require your approval as well. So every month, you'll see these three, and those are what we limited the, the Operations and Transportation Agenda to this month.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. So I need a motion in a second for I, 1, 2, and 3.
Motion to move I, 1, 2, and 3 as noted on the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes motion carries.
Thank you.
We have a resignation from a teacher who we wish her well. She has been in our business department this year, and so we're seeking now replacement for her. That's a difficult area to replace a teacher in, but we're working hard. Appointments contractual, we have a social studies teacher who I'm pleased to recommend to you to bring aboard. She would be beginning on February 1st. We also have a replacement teacher who's coming in for a teacher on leave. Replacement teachers are long-term subs who serve for longer than a semester and a day, so they actually come in on a contractual step and receive a contract for their prorated time. Then we have per diem appointments. These are various daily appointments for substitutes and a long-term substitute teacher, again, less than semester and a day, in social studies for a teacher on leave. Hourly appointments, you'll see substitute secretaries and several staff appointments for committees and curriculum writing projects that are happening, and so the contractual rates are being used there. Christina Bruno, for example, is working with one of her colleagues in a professional development context. Our contract pays that at 79.87 an hour, and then you have several staff members working to help Mr. Brant and Dr. Webb and Mrs. Kandalisiha develop an in-school suspension program. That's what that project is. You know, cohort member for student restorative practice program development is the development of our in-school suspension program. We have athletics event workers. We have an individual there to approve as an athletic worker. You can see the pay schedule attached. Athletic workers may work any one of those jobs in any particular event, so the pay schedule governs the rate that they get for the individual jobs that they do. We have Schedule C advisors, and I wanted to say a couple of things about this in particular. Most of our club advisors are unpaid, and our contract, in Schedule C of our contract with the Teachers Association, the board has negotiated with the association over the years, specific clubs that receive a stipend. So those are the ones that are paid, and that's why this motion carries the Schedule C designation as well, because that's sort of shorthand for our club advisors. Now, we have many community volunteers who work as club advisors, but every club must have a staff member who is certificated and eligible to supervise students. So every club has to have a staff member serving as an advisor. In two clubs, and one of them's on the agenda here tonight, and another one was on the agenda back in August with some volunteers from the community. Two clubs, we had a single staff member who was advising these two clubs, and this year he stepped back from that opportunity, and that's the Teenage Republican Club and also the Student Soldier Support Club. So those are clubs that do not have a formal advisor right now who's board-approved, but they're under the direct supervision of Mr. Cohen and Mr. Brant as we look for a paid, I'm sorry, a staff advisor. Those are not paid, those two clubs, as we look for a staff advisor. So those two clubs are being directed by a staff member who's working with the community volunteers. And we didn't want to delay them from any activity, so we did want to get them rigged up with their volunteers. Community volunteers have to go through background checks, they have to go through our HR process, so that takes some time, and we wanted to get them rolling. But other appointments you see here are staff members who are being appointed as the staff member advisor to the club. Now, moving forward, from some of the conversation we've had this week, moving forward, we are looking at ways, and we'll do this in the Personnel Committee next month, to split those out so that that's clearer to everybody. Who's a community volunteer, who's not, who's Schedule C, who's not, because technically, all of those unpaid clubs are not quote Schedule C clubs. It's just that's the shorthand that's developed over the years. So we'll be seeing some adjustments to how we list club advisor and volunteer positions. We have, under Schedule D, the next one, we have assistant coach coming onboard, and I did give interim approval to that individual once they had cleared all of the background check and other requirements so that they could begin working with that sport, which is one of our winter sports. Each month, we tend to have professional development workshops to approve for our staff members. You can see those listed under number 8. This is a time of year when people are making those arrangements, so even though some of those things are out in May or June, or May or March, or out in the spring, we do want to get those approved, so where folks need to make travel arrangements or other arrangements, they can be free to do that with board approval. Anything that's over $199 requires board approval before it happens. And, you know, we're always pleased to be able to send individuals to national conferences, and those are budgeted for. So you'll see the occasional national conference, which does carry travel and lodging expenses. Leaves of absence, we have several staff members on various unpaid leaves of absence. Those are frequent conversations in the Personnel Committee, but we have everything from federally guaranteed leaves like FMLA to unpaid leaves that we might offer to a staff member for this or that situation that they might be working on in their lives. And then we also have, in the contract, childcare leave that our new parents, our new mothers particularly, can take for up to two years from the birth of their child. Lastly, pleased to recommend, or not lastly, next, pleased to recommend a slew of student teachers and observers. And we had certainly a break in that over the past couple of years, but I'm really pleased that, particularly with TCNJ, we're developing a strong pipeline. Practicum folks are coming in typically in their junior year to do a certain number of hours of observation. Student teachers are coming in generally for the full semester to do much more intensive apprenticeship. And lastly, is a suspension and examination and evaluation resolution for a staff member. That one, we can have some closed session conversation about. So if the board wants to move just 1 through 10, and we can postpone number 11 until after closed session, technically, we'd need two different motions on all that, but I'll let you.
Thank you. So can I have a motion on the Personnel Items?
I so moved the Personnel Committee Items 1 through 10.
Do we feel the need to have discussion in executive before we vote on number 11? I know Dr. Moore shared some information about that. Is that the preference of the board? Okay. So we'll move 1 through 10. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion in a second on Personnel Items 1 through 10. Is there any comments or questions? Hearing none, can I have a roll call vote on Items 1 through 10, please?
Mrs. Blutfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Davidson?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mrs. Kellogg?
Yes.
Mrs. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Hughes?
Yes.
All yes, motion carries.
Thank you. And Dr. Moore, do you have an update from Racism Equity and Diversity Committee?
Yes, and just on the prior vote, we're going to postpone number 11 until after closed session, so we'll be taking some action after closed session. Under K, Racism Equity and Diversity Committee, the school's been working closely with, well, the administration's been working closely with the Teachers Association and Secretaries and Custodial Association, the HCEA. That's our largest labor association. They are sponsoring this year, as they do every year, a book study, a community-wide book study. The book that they have chosen is Refugee by Alan Gratz. And so we're working with them on ways to expand that opportunity, to offer a lot of community-based conversations on empathy and some of the other issues raised in that book. So we're looking toward February, late February, for a first evening event, in which we'll be inviting some speakers in to provide their own refugee stories and insights into the refugee experience, and then some other events happening there as well. So we're very excited about this, and we'll have much more for everybody soon. Some flyers and invitations have begun to go out, but we are, we're going to be working over the next week or so to invite additional folks to that, too. But no business from the Racism Equity and Diversity Committee tonight for action.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. So there'll be no action, so that concludes our committee reports. We'll move into additional business. This is where I envision the board reporting on liaison assignments, delegate assignments, district committees that they're sitting on, once we get those up and running. But I know we did have a Home and School Association meeting last week. Mrs. Blutfeld, do you just want to speak briefly on that? I know you were in attendance.
Yeah, there was a meeting, I think it was about a week and a half ago or so. I think about 10 or 12 parents were there, and there were really three main topics for discussion. One was just sort of talking about, there was a counseling presentation talking about the counseling services, what's available to our students, and the additional resources even outside of the school. Some discussion, too, about how to better get that information out to parents. Things like, I'm not sure if the four-year plan is always being shared with parents, making sure that they have access to that, making sure that new parents are aware, maybe having, one idea that was talked about, having a presentation, like an hour presentation for, sort of an orientation in October. There was some discussion, maybe even doing something for new parents sooner, like starting in May before their students come to Central. One of the other topics was just in general, things to do for new parents. So, you know, having this orientation, maybe having some sort of handbook that goes out to them. There might be something, but maybe something that's a little more complete. There was even talk about, we have these Red Devil ambassadors for students, so doing something like that, where you have more seasoned parents who can sort of help the new parents. And then the final area for discussion was just talking about the Spring Back to School Night, which it's next month. I'm not sure, what's the date on that, Dr. Moore? Do you know?
February 16th, correct? Yes.
So...
February 16th, sorry, my microphone is off.
I don't know if anything's been decided, but I guess some of the ideas that were talked about was having department presentations, maybe for the first part of the night, and then doing something with the students. The thought being that if students are brought in to do things, then parents might be more willing to come to that night, because what ends up happening in the spring, when we did what we did in the fall, most parents weren't coming because they've already met most of their students' teachers. So, you know, trying to think about, be a little creative and think of something else to do with that Spring Back to School Night.
Thank you, Mrs. Blutfeld. How are those meetings advertised? Do they, the Homeschool Association meetings, are they going out by listserv?
Yes. Yeah, and to all, to all parents. So that's been advertised out to all parents. Now, there is a good group of parents who have been to several meetings, so there's a nice core developing there.
And perhaps some of those issues raised that Mrs. Blutfeld was talking about would be good discussion for Communications Committee down the road. Okay, thank you, Mrs. Blutfeld. So other board members be on notice at this point in the meeting going forward, if you've attended a meeting as a delegate or a liaison or a district committee, that I may seek just a brief report from you as to what transpired. Okay, do we have any additional board business before we move into our second residence forum? No, Dr. Moore? Okay, we'll move into our second residence forum now. These are, this is for any general comments, not necessarily action items on the agenda. I just want to take a minute and refresh sort of boundaries of public comment. Each speaker will have five minutes to speak. We have a timer to remind you when four minutes is up, just to give you notice that you have one minute remaining. Just a reminder again, this is not a Q and A with the board. This is an opportunity for you to express your comments. If it's something that we feel we can respond to, we will do so once resident forum closes at the end in the board comments section of the agenda. If it's something that we feel like we need to digest and possibly research, we will do our best to get back to you quickly, and we'll get your contact information. Again, we cannot speak to any confidential matters of individual students, of personnel, of staff. Those items are best to be discussed with the administration directly. And also a final reminder that you can communicate with the board by email, and it has the same effect as coming to the mic and speaking at a public meeting. So folks are always free to email the board. All of our contact information is on the Board of Ed webpage of our district website. So with that being said, is there anybody who would like to speak at public comment tonight?
I'd take a few minutes to publicly thank Dr. Hall for that wonderful presentation as a, and I think the board needs to know that...
Could you please state your name for the record?
I'm sorry.
Sir?
I'm sorry. My name is Rob Richard, Raritan Township.
Thank you.
I wrote it down. Working with the College of New Jersey Student Teachers in Science, I visit many, many high schools throughout central Jersey, and I could tell you what's happening here at Hundredan Central isn't happening at all places. We are very, very fortunate to have Dr. Hall in this position to lead us, lead the school in the area of inquiry-based instruction, phenomenon-based instruction, and most importantly, assessment that is aligned with the next-generation science standards. That's not happening everywhere. So, again, Hundredan Central is a leader in that area, and I think the board needs to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richard, and it's a pleasure to see you again.
Jim Vargas, Raritan Township. I attended the, via teleconference, the state board meeting that talked about all of the initiatives that are going on, the four-hour meeting. When I looked at the work that was going on, Coming Back Strong, I understood what's going on, listened to what you're saying. If you, as a board, decided, we're not going to do it, I think you get a lot of support from the teachers and the parents, and it would take some bravery to do that. Having said that, given all the things that are going on with our students, I think there's other things we ought to put aside. We looked at the new sex standards that came out. They're kind of crazy. I know they've been controversial, some boards have walked away from them. One of the major resource they use is called Amaze, and Amaze has a Ask Amaze that was developed by the state, by the board with Rutgers. And they have different models on there, talk about it. Let me talk about some of it. One of the things addresses pornography. And what it says in pornography says, is pornography normal? They go, yes, it is. You can watch it. Just understand it's not real, people aren't like that. We know that pornography causes problems. They got into a question on oral sex, and it's young people, they were not even high school age. They talk about oral sex, go back and forth, and the end of it that came out to it says, well, some people think it's sex, some people says it isn't. Don't worry about it, just, you know, it's up to you. These things are broken enough, because later on in the meeting, they talked about the next rendition of it, and they did what you were talking about, the second reading, and they come back to do it. And they were talking about genders being trained, that they wanted to assign, you attend a class, you can have separate classes for males and females, but you wanted to go through based on your selected gender. Look, if you want to express yourself one way or feel yourself, that's okay, but there are biological things that you need to know. If you're a male about your body and a female about your body, that you have to know. And these guys are walking on the road saying, no, it doesn't matter. That place is so flawed that you ought to put that aside and focus on what you're doing. The things you guys are doing in the academic is unbelievable, wonderful. Follow on that. And the last thing, you ought to put away the emotion, to put away the politics. I mean, it started back early on, there was talk in the meeting about, you know, critical race theory. I remember when they taught that. One woman was screaming that, you know, she's a racist, I'm sorry. The other woman quit because she wasn't a racist. Things went on, there was a student here that was attacked for her belief on how she felt about life. It went on into the issue that happened around the LGBTQDS meeting where they had a drag queen here. There's ways to address a meeting. I grew up in an environment when blacks and whites were separate. I had friends, but I didn't know them. And they had things like, you know, guess who's coming to dinner, and those type of things. But today, to have programs like Modern Family, that's a great way to bring people together to look at it. It is a controversial part of it. Put away the politics, put away the things that distract from it. There's a new thing that's coming down the road that's going to teach people how to disseminate what is real, what isn't real. Lord, the federal government tried to do that, and they just threw it away. Don't do that one either. Don't do that one either. Focus on what you're doing, focus on getting these kids trained, and let the other things mature. The last thing, and it's a small thing that I'll talk about, it's funny. I love Dr. Hall's presentation. The way they're talking about education today is wonderful. I grew up in a Jesuit education, we were always taught that way, and it's challenging, right? But he showed one slide up there that talked about climate change, and it was great how everything broke out. At the bottom, he had humans. I'm taking this out of context. There are people in the world that believe humans are responsible for all the bad climates in the world, and it happens. We know that our planet has, a Gia split twice and came back, we've had multiple ice ages. It sends a message sometimes that you've got to be careful. Those, I think you were calling unconscious biases, that we're the bad guys and we're causing, we're not just part of the ecosystem. Again, going back to it, just coming down to, you're on the right track, you've got a, everybody has a chance. It's been a tumultuous first six months, I think everybody would understand that. I think you have a chance, if you put those things aside and move ahead with what you're doing, you'll get a lot of support. And then the last thing, I'll make it as a personal plea, is in the diversion inclusion law, you have to respect whatever a student has for a pronoun, you have to follow it. That's great, that's the law, go do it. But it says you don't have to tell a parent. You want parents to believe in you, tell them you trust them, tell them you're going to share that with them. And here it is. If there's a problem, you can go to, you know, child services or to the court. Bring the parents in, bring the students in, focus on them, and we'll all be behind you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vargas.
Good evening. Some of you may remember that I spoke last year at a board meeting to give voice to a student who did not feel heard. Tonight, I am here to voice concerns related to Dr. Moore's recommendation to the board and the board's approval of this recommendation of the last board meeting, which resulted in a new hire in the math department that was placed at step 13 of the salary guide. This recommendation and subsequent approval has caused a lot of concern, confusion, and has hurt staff morale. In short, we feel undervalued and underappreciated. I'm sure the new math hire is well-qualified and will make a great addition to our instructional staff. I also look forward to working with her. I have personally communicated with many staff members who share my thoughts and concerns and wanted to speak tonight, but were very much concerned with potential retaliation for not agreeing with Dr. Moore's recommendation. Whether it's right or wrong, this is the overwhelming impression throughout the school. We also felt it would be most efficient to have one speaker to express our collective viewpoint. I'm a little nervous to be that speaker, because my employment here has been pristine, and I do not want anything to jeopardize that. I would expect that the board would not want staff members to be fearful to speak, and I trust that I will not have any issues based on me speaking here tonight. I have been the counselor for the Project Trust program here at Hunter and Central since 2001. My clinical approach and the philosophy of Project Trust is rooted in restorative practices. One of the main concepts of restorative practices is something called fair process. When I teach this concept to our students, I refer to it as the three Es: engage, explain, and expect clarity. I will be using this concept to organize my remarks this evening. The first E is to engage. So I will engage by sharing facts that we have gathered through public records. The new hire graduated from Hunter and Central in 2010 and is currently on step nine on the salary guide of her current employer. This hire is the child of a former board member who sat on the board as recently as last month, and the wife of a former board president who was instrumental in having Dr. Moore receive a five-year extension to his contract. In fact, the recent hire's husband highlighted this as one of his major accomplishments during his recent political campaign for assemblyman. All of this is public information. The Hunter and Central salary guide does not distinguish between a PhD and a master's plus 60. So it would be expected that the new hire would be hired here at master's plus 60, step nine. By moving from her current employer to Hunter and Central, again, according to public records, she would be making a salary jump of over $11,000. Yet Dr. Moore recommended to the board, which was then approved by the board, that the new hire be placed at step 13 with a salary of $94,830. So her jump in salary went from her current employer to Hunter and Central is well over $22,000. I'm going to move on to the second E of fair process, which is to explain. So let me explain our position. We are confused about how the new hire jumped from step nine at her current employer to step 13 at Hunter and Central. We realize there may be negotiation, but how can one negotiate something they have not earned or don't have? There are many staff who have significantly more experience than the recent hire, but are placed at a step significantly below her. I will use myself as an example. I'm a 22-year employee at Hunter and Central, five years from full retirement, same educational placement level as the recent hire. The difference is I am only at step 11. Yes, I am two steps below the new hire. That's a difference of over $6,000. The new hire, who has 19 less years of experience than me, is making $6,000 more than me. I don't know about you, but this just doesn't pass the smell test of being fair. The last E in fair process is expect clarity. We expect clarity regarding Dr. Moore's rationale for recommending placement of the new hire on step 13. To that end, I will email all of you a copy of what I have read this evening. If there is no explanation, this will unfortunately reinforce to us that our concerns do not matter to Dr. Moore. We want to work in an environment that demonstrates respect for all staff, even if they do not agree with what Dr. Moore recommends. We simply want to be heard and at least believe we are being valued. Right now, this is not the case. We are hoping that changes sooner rather than later. Thank you for listening to me, and I realize I went over, so thank you for not cutting me off and giving me this extra time. And thank you in advance for our anticipation of an open dialogue as to this issue. Good night.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
So I'll just make one comment, and I think I made it at the last meeting or December meeting. There will never be retaliation to anyone for coming to speak at a board meeting. I can assure everyone that, whether it's a student, a parent, a community member, and most importantly, a staff member. That will not happen under my watch, under this board's watch. So I just want to make that clear once again. Personnel matters, we can't speak to. All I can say is being a member of the Personnel Committee, that all of our applicants go through the same process and have gone through the same process by way of vetting, interviewing, and the like. There has not been in my tenure on the board, an applicant who hasn't gone through the same exact process. And that's, you know, the extent of what we can say on a personnel matter. Is there anything you'd like to add, Dr. Moore?
Yeah, I'll wait until...
The end.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak tonight?
Good evening. My name's Edward Brant, I'm principal here at Hunter and Central, and also live in Allentown, Pennsylvania. I just want to follow up the presentation about the testing. My 30th year of education, I started out as a math teacher, spent a lot of time as a math supervisor, and now as principal. The standardized testing that's gone on over the years is very intimate, if you would, to me, as far as an educator. And over those 30 years, the amount of ebbs and flows and the, this type of test, that type of test, the changes in the testing from the state, national perspective also, maybe illustrates how difficult it is to assess students and their learning. It is a very, very hard thing. And amongst all the changing in over the years, the one steady thing that has kind of stood in my mind, and I feel like I need to share with you to please keep in mind as well, as you digest all the data that you have, is that one constant for sure that I think is that the value of the certified classroom teachers, that they themselves, many and if not all the time, are the best and strongest source for information on the students' learning. It is very difficult to come up with one bullet point, and whether it's the fall or the spring, from the state standpoint. But when you have educators who are working with the students day in and day out, just remember that they too are some of the most incredible resources for you engaging that learning. And that's all I just wanted to share. Again, teaching statistics as well, I realize how, how difficult it is to digest any one given point, data point from the state as to how well our students are learning. They are learning, I can guarantee you that anecdotally, but I just wanted to remind you to keep in mind the value of our classroom teachers and everything they are putting into in teaching, learning, and assessing their learning along the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brant. Is there anybody else who is interested in speaking tonight? Okay, with that, we will close our second residence forum and open it up for board comments. Is there anyone? I know Dr. Moore has a few things to say. Is there anyone else who has any board comments? Okay, Dr. Moore.
So, thank you. And, I mean, I think one of the things that's come through in all of our conversations tonight is just how difficult this profession is. You know, from, from the amount of testing, the amount of data, the amount of expectations. Dr. Hall mentioned too, the staffing concerns. We've seen really significant challenges in trying to staff our, our school. And, and we're, we're among the lucky ones. Our retention has been strong. Our, our hiring has been strong. We haven't been in positions where we, where we haven't been able to, to put a talented person in front of our students. And that's, you know, that's at the end of the day, what we're always focused on through all of the challenges, is making sure that we're bringing the best people on board for whatever position we have open. And, and that's, that's a near sacred, if not completely sacred commitment that I have here, is to making sure that the folks we bring in are, are top-notch. That's for our kids, but that's also for who's working beside all of our other staff members, who's in that department meeting with you, who is next door when you need assistance, you know, who is there in lunch with you to, to share all those frustrations that are, that are rampant in our profession right now. It's not lost on me at all, how difficult this profession is. And now, in that are facts. You know, there are facts certainly that our personnel, facts that we can't share to any degree. There are facts like the fact that the contract with the HCEA has no requirement any longer for placement with regard to steps and years' experience, that, that those of us who were in those negotiations committees know very well, that, that that was something that was, was negotiated out of the contract. So that I, as superintendent, and our personnel office and the board is free to appoint anybody at a step based on, on assessment of, of what they can bring to, to the district. So, there's, there's nothing sort of incorrect there as far as our negotiated agreements with, with our associations. What I can share just on top of that though, again, is a lot of pride in the hiring that we do. Proud of the retention that we have, I'm proud of who comes to apply to our open positions, I'm proud of the fact that we get people from other districts to join us here, to do the work that we do, especially those who have prior connections to our school, whether as graduates or former employees. We had an employee leave for a year and then come back, deciding that she was, was not finding, you know, green or grass on the other side of the fence. So, we're proud of what we do, but it does, it does require, you know, some difficult decisions, especially with mid-year appointments. So I appreciate, you know, the board's continued support, and I appreciate that support, not just in the good conversations we have about the candidates that we bring on board, but the support that they, that you all levy that continues to make this a place that people want to be at. So thank you, thank you all for that. The contract, by the way, last fact I'll share, does offer, and not just offers, but requires, a process for employees who have a concern to work through the administrative channels, through a formal grievance, step-by-step process. So just know that that's in place as well, that's well-understood, and, and, well, I'll, I'll leave it there. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Any further comments? With that, I need a motion to convene into executive session to discuss litigation, HIBs, and personnel with action being taken upon our return. We rarely say that, but there will be action taken upon our return from executive session.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Seven twelve. If anybody needs a restroom, there's one.
If anybody needs a restroom, there's one.
Can I have a motion in a second to reconvene into public session?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are going to return to the personnel portion of the agenda. Can I have a motion to approve the following resolution please? Whereas the 100th Central Regional High School District Board of Education seeks to provide all students with educational instructors capable of providing students with an appropriate and safe educational experience consistent with New Jersey state law, regulation, and